Um.
Is it?
Yeah, absolutely.
It really is.
Then you know, then. That's what I work for, um. W F R I needs to be the one who don't.
Oh, there he is.
We got it. They're not in the morning.
Um.
But, um, you said.
They don't.
Um.
They don't see.
You're not.
You're not.
Not you think.
Two alarms.
You turn.
Cause I know this button can fix. So you can hit the wrong thing.
This is the whole.
So it's it's. Right? Quick and remove. Grab out.
All right. I will now call to order the town of Elon Town Council meeting for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. If all who are able will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Republic. Which stands. On its. Principle. Let me see in justice for all.
Hey. Moving on to our consent agenda, if the town clerk will. Please read those items.
Yes, we have that A February the twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, town council meeting minutes.
Any questions or comments for Diane related to the minutes? I have a motion to approve my reference items listed within agenda.
Who?
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the audit presentation with Becky Loy, who is here to guide us through that conversation. And any comments before Becky takes over?
Um.
You don't have to.
No. I I mean. I've been, I was happy with the audits. Um, I think you will be as well. We're very fortunate to have. Becky as our auditor and Patricia Roses are 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 finance from you are. I think you. They do a good job and. Do a good job for us, so we appreciate it, so.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, appreciate you adding me at the last minute. As most of you know, my life has been in a little bit of turmoil for the last few months, so I'm really happy to have this done and to be here and presenting it, so. I appreciate your patience as we have gone through some 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 tough times, me and Patricia both actually, so we're 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 glad to be here today. So what you have in front of you is a financial statement, and I have done a four-page summary for you so. Um, that we can summarize the activity for the year. It is an unmodified opinion, and so that means that we did not find anything in the numbers or the internal controls that caused us to be concerned. With how you as a city collect your. Financial information. We're looking at your processes, your procedures. We're not looking at every number. If we were doing that, we'd never finish the audit because we'd have to look at so many different things. These are paid. So we're looking at how you collect the data and how it gets reported in your books and records to make sure that it's being collected correctly. So what you have are highlights, and I'm not going to read through all this, I'm gonna. Want you to bring your attention down to the first, uh, the fourth bullet. Um, and and I'm just gonna make this comment real quick before I look at the numbers. Everything looks really good on the numbers. So I'm gonna tell you that just like we said from the very start, but one of the things that really sums that up is the unreserved fund balance. You are required to have eight percent. You have a hundred and one point four percent. So that tells you right there that you, as far as being fiscally responsible and having a good fund balance. Um, you're well, well, well over the amount that's required, so. That's always a good place to be and. Strive up to always be way above that eight percent. If you have eight percent, the L G C has long been involved in your finances and you don't want to be in that position. So if you look at the chart at the bottom, you'll see that, um, the first two columns are the governmental activities, two thousand twenty-two compared to two thousand twenty-one. Lots of different fluctuations in the line items, but the the first one is cash. Your cash went up two point seven million. Two million of that is ARPA money. Okay, so you're gonna see the cash went up, but so did the liabilities because you are required to spend that money in a certain way. So it kind of nets to zero when it when you're looking at your your unbalanced. If you keep on going, you'll see the the capital assets went up, um, and you know, that's just your normal spending. You'll see that your total assets went up by three point four. You'll see your liabilities went up by one point nine. The thing to look at is the unrestricted down at the bottom. Seven point five million compared to six million last year, so an increase of one point five. So when we take out the capital assets, because there's depreciation on that too, we take out the ARPA money. The increase is really the activity, the increase in the activity. Now look back and get on the next page. And so that's a good, positive, strong increase there. Your business type activities are the next two columns, and again, your cash went up by one point seven million. Your fixed assets went up by one point seven million, that's the pump station. Your liabilities also went up by one point seven, so that pump station and the debt kind of offset each other again. And so your increase in the unrestricted. One point seven million, I don't know how it came out to one point seven million every time, but one point seven million, and that's basically again your activity. So your activity is really what boosted up your fund, your unreserved, uh, unrestricted net position. That's really what boosted that up is your activity. And so that's good because you don't want restricted money to to be what you're relying on. You want your activity to be what you're relying on to increase your position. So if you turn to the next page. The next part is your change in that position, so this is your revenue and your expense. And you'll see if you you go through the first two columns, there's not a lot of fluctuation in there. And so when we get down to the increase in that position, one point three, so it's not exactly the change, but but most of it compared to one point five. So you're a little less than the prior year, but still a very good increase, a very consistent amount of revenue over expenditure. So what that means is you're adding to your your net position. And so when, you know, you, every now and then you do have to use that, but that's what it's there for, to be able to pay for the, um, infrastructure you need or whatever it is that the town needs. That's why you want that that, um, unreserved fund balance to continue to go up. So when you do need it, or you need a transfer to the water and sewer to help pay for something, you have the funds there to do that. The next two columns, the business type, you'll see that there is an increase in the charges for service of one point three million. You'll see if you go on down to the expenditures, just a little bit of an increase in the expenditures. But your increase in that position is one point four million. Compared to five hundred thousand last year. So a pretty significant increase in your charges for service. And so I wanted to understand why that was an increase of of, it's actually thirty-one percent, which is a pretty strong increase. Your rate was a ten percent increase. It produced a ten percent increase, your usage produced a twelve point seven five, almost thirteen percent increase. So most of that thirty-one percent is based on. Usage and the increase in the rate. And so you should continue to see that increase as you go forward, which is what you want. Because the infrastructure for a water and sewer system is very expensive, and you guys have some things going on that will require a lot of, a lot of revenue. So one of the things that I looked at was, you know, how does this compare to like the last five years? And so you're at five point three million, almost five point four. Last year was four million, the year before that's four. Well, that was three point six. And the year before that, three point five. So if we go back to two thousand eighteen, which we might could say is a normal, was is where a normal year was, you can see that you've actually increased your revenue pretty significantly in the last five years. And so I think that's important when you have an aging infrastructure that you're having to constantly do maintenance to and replace and and add to. I think that's a good, a good place to be for your water and sewer fund. One of the things that, um, a water sewer fund, it's it's called a business type activity, and the goal is that it always breaks even and it covers its own expenses. That's what that business type fund is supposed to do. And so. Years ago, the sales tax. Would allow, they allowed you to put a little bit of that into your water and sewer. And they stopped that in North Carolina, they said you can't do that. And when they did that, a lot of the water and sewer funds went negative. And so it became a real challenge for it to have a good, strong fund balance and to have revenue in excess of expenditures because of the cost of the maintenance. And so for you guys, you're you're in a good position. You're you're really in a good position for what your net statement, uh, your actual net position is at the end of the year. So I commend you as a board because you're making the decisions on how you spend the money and what you do and, you know, the rates. Nobody wants to increase rates, but sometimes you have to do that, and so it takes a lot of, um. A lot of review and analysis to figure out what you need to do there, and I know that it's a big deal every time you do the budget to figure out. Where do I need to be? But right now, it looks very good, the one point four million is a a great, um, increase in your net position, and I think you will continue to see that. Um, you know, your usage did go down for the school being closed, university being closed. We hope it. And so that usage should at least be where it is right now. So that's a good place for you to be. If you look at the third page, the third page is an analysis of your capital assets. Where a lot of the money gets spent, you know, when you have, um. You, a lot of big purchases, uh, you know, fire truck, I saw somebody said they had to buy a fire truck and it was one point nine million dollars. And I could not believe that it was one point nine million dollars by a fire truck. Uh, that is the reality, that is the reality of where of where we are, and so when I look at this, um, it's no, all normal, normal expenditures, um, for your governmental fund. The actual increase is very small, only forty-two thousand. So you had a million dollars worth of purchases, you also had a half a million in depreciation. So you you have to take that appreciation off every every year. But you also had another change. I'm not gonna go in a lot of detail about it, but we did have to apply a new standard this year with leases. And so we had to pass your leases, um, had to meet either operating or capital lease, had to determine which kind it was. You had a lot of capital lease on your books. And so they wanted to change the title of that to right-to-use asset, and so if you look in the details, you'll see there's a new line there that says right-to-use asset. So we basically moved it out of capital asset and put it in the right-to-use. Asset line, and so it did come out of your capital, um, information. The other thing that that did was it put a debt for that lease, that right-to-use asset. The local government commission and really not local government commission, um, the governmental standard, auditing standards boards that makes all of the criteria that you follow. For the last ten years has really been looking at debt. So you guys have had, over the last ten years, you've had to add. How much your other post-deployment benefits were gonna cost you, which most mostly is your health insurance. And then you've had to look at what the, um, retirement was gonna cost you, and that didn't used to be on your, on your financial statements. They wanted to measure, every unit had whatever specific things they had, but they wanted to measure what those things were. So all of a sudden, all these huge liabilities. Financial statement. Kind of new reality, really, and what that obligation was gonna be. Um, you pay as you go, so. It kind of like buying a new car, as long as I make payment, it doesn't really matter what it costs, well, that's not what it is. We want, they wanted to see what it, what it actually was gonna cost, and so this follows too with that whole mindset of getting all the debt on the books. And so there's a lease debt in there now, and so the change wasn't very big, but it is on a different line, and it did come out of these numbers. Uh, the purchases, the West Harvard, um, property that you bought and street resurfacing were the two biggest ones. And then cars and equipment, your normal stuff, so everything we would have expected to see. The business type, the next columns you'll see went up by one point seven, again, that's the pump station that was added this year. The last page is just detail on the assets that I already went over. So I'm not gonna go over there that again, it just gives you detail. And I will tell you that the financial statement has a lot of detail in it. If you wanna understand a little more about what your recording requirements are in the audit. I would suggest you read it, go through it, look at it, there are a lot of information in there. I know that probably only accountants would like to read the financial statement. Um, but there is a lot of good information in there, and, um, it it could bring light to some of the things that you see here that you, that what is that? What is that number? It could give you some information on on what, how those numbers are accumulated and what they represent. So I am gonna just real quickly go over the governance letter, you have that, I'm not gonna go over it in detail, but we do follow GAAP, joint executive accounting principles. That's how your numbers have to be calculated. We also follow the government auditing standards, that's tells me how I have to audit and what I have to look at. We also have, uh, and Patricia and I both have the the criteria for the training that's required. A lot of training in governmental accounting to be able to sign off on your audit. We follow all the ethical requirements and, um. And, you know, that is the problem, and we want you to know that we follow that and take it seriously. This also says that we look at your internal controls and make sure that you have the right ones and to make sure they're operating as you expect them. Nothing worse than. A fraud happening and you thought you had a control in place to prevent that fraud. And so we're gonna look at what your procedures are and if you're actually, if they're actually following them. Uh, one of the other things about fraud is that when you think something's happening a certain place, it's not. Somebody has figured out a way to sidestep that, that procedure. And so what I tell people is two sets of eyes. It's hard to commit a fraud if you got two sets of eyes on on anything, um, because most of the time. Person doesn't want to try to convince another person to commit a fraud. Most of the time a fraud is committed when they have sole control over reporting and getting the cash and writing the checks and making the. Control over all of those pieces. And so they can get in there and move things around and. Uh, do a, commit a fraud because they have control over all of that, so you want two sets of eyes anytime you can get it. This also talks about the journal entries, and I want to say we didn't have any journal entries, um, from the audit perspective. What, because you have Patricia involved in our process, she actually does all the journal entries and gets things cleaned up and journal entries done for end of the year. And so we don't do any journal entries, and so that's good, you you wouldn't want to have Patricia involved, and then I'm doing file entries too, you wouldn't want that. So it's working and it's working the way it's intended for, so I'm glad to report that. There was one finding, and this is the last thing, um, you did have an over budget. And so when we do the financial statements, we look at each department. And look for whether or not that department. Spent more than what was budgeted for that department, you did have one that was over budget. I didn't actually put it in the financial statements when I submitted to them to the L U C, and they said, you gotta put that in there, so I tried, um. You know, it, um, depending on what it is, uh, and why it happened, you know, I I. Probably should have known, I was, they were gonna make me change that, but that that is the way we report it and. Um, so anytime, and I think it was just a matter of timing on that finding. Um, you know, when you have someone brand new in the position and the person that left the position in. Take care of everything or give you a big long list of all this, well, nobody does that. Um, and so that was just one of the things that, um, the budget amendments was one of the things that was kind of slow and happening, I think, um. And see in the minutes that it is happening regularly now. This is just one, it's like the cracks, and it was the property that was purchased. So it was in in the department. It was sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, uh, over budget, so it wasn't the whole amount of the property, but the department budget could be covered the whole purchase. Unfortunate, and I understand why why it would have happened, and I didn't really have concerns about it, which is why I didn't put it in there. Because I knew that that had been corrected, I knew that budget amendments were being done and that had been. Um, but that was one at the end of the year, and it happens on June thirtieth, and so, you know, as of June thirtieth, if it's over, it's over. You can't, you can't do a budget amendment after June thirtieth for that expenditure, so there's really nothing you can do to take that away. And so I would just say, you know, look at that. As of June thirtieth. Before, for that June meeting, you make sure, and I I believe that's being done. So. That was, that was why. I I felt like I was justifying myself by by not putting that in there because I knew that it had been corrected. Um, so that is, um, it it, that is in there and had to be reported, so that's the only finding that we had. Do you all have any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer them. Um, as Rich said, everything looks good, um, the numbers look good, and again, you know, it, the board and the council is who. Manage, helps manage that, but then you have your team that puts it into place and everything was really good, so. Good year.
I just have a question. Deferred influence and resources.
Oh, oh, my goodness.
Under governmental activities, business type activities, huge increases.
Yeah, so here, here's, this is a little bit of a frustration, on page fifty. You will see what comprises the deferred influence. You have some normal things like prepaid taxes and, um, uh, taxes, prepaid taxes, and then everything below that fifteen hundred and thirty-six dollars. Has to do with your retirement. So they go, they they, it, you know, rate, they do the retirement based on mortality rates, they do it based on what they think the market's gonna do. And they do all these fancy calculations and they give us these numbers. So when I look at your pension, if you look at the pension balance, it's actually a million dollars less than it was last year. Just crazy to me. What they did is they moved cat, they moved it from the liability into this deferred input. And it's just a change in what they think the investments are gonna earn. So when you look at the two, when you look at the pension in total, it didn't change very much. But the components did. And that's what they're doing, I mean, that's what an actuary does, an actuary will. What they expect the plan to earn, how many people they think. Hey, how many people they think will start taking collections off of the retirement they're looking at, that's what an actuary do, look at all these assumptions. And try to come up with what they think is the best number, and so that projection, they they overprojected what they thought the. Earnings would be. So that's a correction to that. And that's why it's a liability. So they think that they're gonna have less earnings and you're gonna have more to pay. And that was one of the changes they made with the pension, when they put the pension on there, and it's very complicated, I have to tell you. It's very frustrating, if you go through this financial statement, you will see probably six pages worth of notes on the pension. And and it it, and it's everything, it's so it's, um. Local government retirement, it's also the L E O, the law enforcement officer retirement, you have the same thing for for the law enforcement, it's just not as big. And so that, those are calculations that they give us, and these are the numbers that they give us, and it is, they are produced from an actuary who goes in at all the criteria. And calculate what they think the abilities are gonna be. And what the earnings. Your part of the, um, bucket list.
And issues with that, that we may make changes of some.
I don't really know. No, they they, they think these changes are like this, they're really high and low, um, the pension went way up one year and then it went way down this year, and I don't really understand. Why we have to report that, because your obligation is really roughly the same. So I don't really understand why all these details are so important to, um, to the reporting, um, but that's what we're required to report. And I I. I think it's, I don't know that there's been any issues, and you know, the local, the local government retirement has always been very strong. And so I don't know that that's what this is about. I do know that they have to look at the market. Because if they're expecting a certain rate and they're not getting anywhere close to that rate, that would be a huge problem. And and could produce a shortfall in having the investments to cover and the earnings to cover the liability.
Is, so as a fair say, that's, that represents our share. Of of the local government retirement programs obligations. So it's not even anything that we do. It's, it's our, our part of their issue. Which down the road could lead to higher rates. You know, they did go up on their rates for the employer contribution this coming year, uh, on both the L E O as well as John government employees. They haven't increased the employee share, but they've increased ours again.
And what they're looking at i- is, you know. If that liability gets to a certain point. And it's not funded, you could, they could create issues with the towns and cities because they won't have the money to pay it. I I don't, I, North Carolina's is funded. So, you know, it it doesn't really feel like it's an issue for North Carolina, but these are the governmental standards that that have to be followed, so. Yeah, it's the liability piece, and this is, you know, this particular piece is the, is the earnings, which makes sense. Even the way the economy is being, it makes sense. I would expect to see a big change next year. And you get a printout in the time frame.
Any other questions for Becky?
Always go right to the first line, for the first lines when you said, good. I said, I can look at the rest of the stuff, but that's pretty much what I'm always looking for. Yeah, we do audits, and I was, I've been on, I was on a board where we did audit. Review the audits, and this one looked very good.
Well, I have to tell you, it's a lot easier to do one like this, this, but it's not good. You know.
Right.
Because you, I mean, you're responsible for managing these funds in a fiscally responsible way, and so that's a big responsibility for you guys, and. You know, it's, it it's great to be able to say it looks good and the earnings are good and you've made good decisions, especially given where we've been. It's been tough, you know, you really have had a few tough years, and even though I don't think the impact was near as negative as it could have been. Um, there are a lot of decisions that had to be made and be made quickly, and you don't always know the impacts of the decisions when they're like that. And so, um, you know, I'm, I'm glad to report that it's good.
Like, we got the copy in the email, it said that the mayor was was Tolly. Last year, and yeah, no, just kidding, and, uh, so I'm glad to see that that was updated to the mayor's.
Yes, we had a few last-minute. Oh, guys, for that. Some things changed.
Thank you. I've been called mayor Tolly since I admit that I. To get his mail.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Much. If you don't have to take action on that, correct?
I don't think you have to approve it or adopt or thing, it's, it is what it is, really.
I would accept it.
Yeah, maybe we should, I I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action carries. Y'all are welcome to stay if you need. They Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon entertainment, but you are welcome to.
It is pie day, so go have a piece of pie.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to note for, uh, Thomas's information that we were told by our auditor that we're fiscally responsible. So take that up the chain.
Fiscally responsible.
There's lots of comments about us not being fiscal.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'll just take the chance. Um, all right, we'll open it up for public comments, this is an opportunity for members of the public to share any concerns or wishes that they have for the town. Anyone online, Diane?
There is.
Or the three.
Uh, I have two devices, Rich.
Let's see, one, two.
All right, hearing none will close the public comment section, moving on to our public hearing for the evening. Um, public hearing to amend the Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four point thirty, overtime parking and parking in restricted areas. Writing that update.
I will.
Okay.
So, um, what has, what happened was, um, we found out that we were able to, um. To, uh, acquire the A T and T, uh, lot beside this building. And, um, so. Our downtown development, um, director, uh, talked to the merchants and sent out a letter to the merchants to let them know that. Parking was available and it could be reserved for their employees.
Yeah.
Well, when we got ready to create the ordinance to adopt. They park it, then these newly reserved parking spaces, they're, uh, in our code of ordinances, it did not speak to reserve parking. So therefore, in order to, um, make any changes to your code of, you have to have a public hearing. So that's, that's the first piece of 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 what we're doing here tonight, is holding this public hearing.
We will now open up the public hearing for comments. Hearing none will now close the public hearing. So will that be transitioned to our next agenda, or will we be voting on that this evening? That's the A and B.
It's the A and B.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. So moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Um, letter A, Town of Elon Code of Ordinances Amendment.
So, as I fore stated in the, um, public hearing, is, um, as you can see, the facts and issues that occurred, and now what we want to do is to adopt this, this ordinance to amend our code of ordinances under the section, under chapter twenty-four, section, uh, twenty-four point thirty, to include reserve parking.
So in essence, this gives us the ability to ticket people who don't belong there. And Jill has set up a, uh, gotten permits that she is providing to downtown businesses. I think they're each getting four. So that may not be available for, you know, maybe full, so people can't park there, but they don't have one of those permits on their vehicle. Um, we just can't ticket them.
So police, police departments enforcing that?
Yes.
Twenty-four seven?
Um, I, I don't know if it's twenty-four seven or not. I, I would suspect they wouldn't worry too much overnight, since there's no business going on, but certainly during business hours.
Any of those, and you may not know this offhand, but, um, handicapped, more handicapped accessible? And if so, are they gonna serve a specific?
This is a gravel lot.
So, yeah. That's, oh, yeah, that's right behind there. Okay.
So this is not the, the lot that comes out onto college? It does access college?
Yeah, right between the lighthouse and the AT&T fence.
It almost looks like it's the parking lot for the lighthouse, but it's actually owned by AT&T.
Okay, but I mean, it's, it, it, it's not all gravel. I think some of it's blacktop, right?
It's all gravel there, and it says, there's little signs that say permit parking only.
Oh, okay.
Who maintains that?
We are.
The wheel takes responsibility for gravel and.
I know at one time we had talked about that being like a one-way. Kind of tight in there where it was gonna go through our property on the other side. Is that something that we're just holding off on, or?
Yeah, I, you know, there's there's been a lot of fluctuating discussions about what's happening on that side of the block. And I think our, our sentiment was till we knew what was happening, we didn't really wanna go and, tear out that little, that little green space we had to put a driveway in. Um, and I'm not sure the access from this lot goes directly to our, our lot. So it'd have to be working with other property owners to, I think, to get across their land as well. So again, if there was something large happening on that side, as was once envisioned, you know, there'd be an opportunity there to do something.
I, I only had one small concern, and I didn't know if they thought about it, cuz, you know, it's just trying to think everything through, but the, uh, farmers market will be open until six. And at least under the old guard, um, they put it on the parking lot. They had also put vendors down that street. So I just wanted to make sure that that access point would not be a danger or anything, or shouldn't be able to. That's all I needed to make sure.
And Jill's checked with the chief as long as we're maintaining fire, just, you know, fire access up and down, or emergency access up and down West College. They can still put vendors along.
Okay.
Church side.
Not even need it this year, but just, yeah, but we'll see. But I, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Uh, some of West Lebanon, they, some of the businesses, lease spaces, uh, from some of the property owners in, in the, in the alleyways out back. It's just kind of all over.
The other lot is a private lot that's reserved, right?
The other lot being?
One is diagonal from the, um, where Hilton College.
Uh, I believe the university, I guess you, that's, you know, that's that parking was, we're so certain, at least part of that parking was dedicated to the town center project. So some of that is parking for, uh, the bookstore, Andorra, Smithy's, everything that's in that town center uh, building.
Yeah, I know Pandora's pays part of there.
Yeah, and I know that, um, McDonald, who owns Dr. Kowalski's property, he leases parking spots to the downtown businesses and it's expensive.
So we're basically undercutting him.
Hmm, yeah, maybe.
It's only ten spots.
We're providing a service to our downtown businesses.
But we said, and your note said, we, we're going to offer this for free, but we may look at it as a, as a charge there.
When, when this was originally envisioned, you know, under, uh, prior downtown folks, uh, the idea was to lease it and, and use it to generate revenue. That was not the recommendation of the current downtown committee and, and staff. I think part of the sentiment was, you know, that it's been a couple of years where the businesses down there have had a lot of difficulty. And rather than, an opportunity to help relieve them of a little bit, so that, you know, they could, they can recoup what they lost, if you will. And, yeah, we'll take a look at next year and, and we'll take a look every year about whether it's time to, to, you know, start leasing those spaces. Limits, and right now, anybody who has a permit can park there. If you're gonna lease it, eliminate to ten people who can park there. And if they happen not to be working that day.
Yes, it's empty.
So that was, that was also part of it, is to, to make, you know, allow it to be used as much as possible, uh, for the folks that it's intended for.
And some of those in place still park in the church parking lot, too.
So, so what do we lease that space for on an annual basis?
That's six thousand dollars.
Thanks, AT&T.
For ten parking spaces.
Ultimately, it's ten, yeah. You know, we're different numbers initially, estimates of what it could look like. Uh, when we finally got in there and actually started putting it together and circulating, you know, we're at, we're at ten. We were thinking it might be twelve or thirteen initially, but thirty dollars a month.
Right, other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the amendment related to traffic? The first one?
I'll move.
You just told us about the twenty, the traffic ones, twenty-three dash eight-seven, and we just wanted.
The first one is to make the change to the code of ordinances. And the second one is to add this restricted or reserved parking to our traffic schedule, our parking schedule, excuse me.
So are we just doing one vote?
Yeah, we're doing the first one.
Yes.
We're doing the first one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to traffic ordinance amendment parking schedule, and I know you just shared that. Any other questions for Diane related to that particular ordinance?
And this just identifies it in our parking schedule.
So we just have to sign it out there that states that it's reserved. By the town.
Parking only. I think signs actually already there.
Do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let her see budget amendment number four, budget amendment for West Lebanon, um, sidewalk project.
This is one of those projects that has taken a lot longer to accomplish than we ever thought it would. Waiting on, on railroad and, and waiting on the other railroad after the first one said yes. What was supposed to have started last October, finally, after we got through, uh, NCRR, got held up until just this last month, um, by, um, Brockham Southern. So they got out and started working on it, and what they have, the, the grading issues at, at Church Street resulted in a need for a little bit extra handrail for ADA compliance, uh, which is beyond the scope of the project. And, um,
Handrail?
Handrail, yes.
You know, slope?
Yeah, where it's, it's sloping down, uh, sixty foot of additional handrail. At about eight, about seventy-nine hundred and ten dollars and nineteen cents worth of handrail.
Is this, is the slope itself in compliance with grade?
Um, I, I'm not certain. I, I think so, but.
It looks steeper than what traditionally seen for, was it twelve?
Twelve to one.
Yeah, twelve to one.
Yeah. I, I'm not certain, Monty. That was, it was, the slopes ended up being what they were, I think, and so part of the ADA compliance is putting in these railings. I'd have to check with our engineers on, on what the actual slope looks like. I'm not, I'm not clear on that right now.
And this is cheaper than bringing in dirt and bringing up the.
You gotta match it at the other end. So that, that's one issue. The other issue is another seven thousand dollar or so item that was, um, signed off on verbally last year this time, um, that, but for some reason, at the time of, of written change order was never done. Uh, and that had to do with some work at Manning Avenue in West Lebanon. About the existing sidewalk tie-in. Uh, there was some deterioration of the asphalt that needed to be repaired, some drainage issues that were gonna have to be addressed that weren't clear when we, when they did the initial design. So that was, that was authorized, like I said, about a year ago, and the work was done. When, I, I just found out that there, that had happened. So we, that's another change order, uh, that was about seventy-five hundred dollars worth of work. So together, we're at I was at fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety, and I have something like that. That, um, we need, I'm requesting you to, uh, approve a budget amendment uh, that would allow us to authorize that change, that second change order and pay for the first one. Uh, and get that project completed.
So that handrail has not been installed yet, right? I didn't see it.
Not the sixty feet that we're talking about, no.
So if we make this budget amendment, you're gonna go ahead and get that done?
Yes, we'll get the change order signed, they'll get it installed, and we'll get the payment vouchers moving forward.
Well, the, well, the entire sidewalk from Church Street back to McGurk's would be ADA compliant?
Yes. I believe so.
The intersection? I noticed one intersection looks like it's not.
To McGurk's, no, I'm sorry, cuz it's, the project started at Manning.
What's the street, um, between Manning and? It's Lee. That's why I thought you were talking about, that's, that's a section there that looks like it's not ADA compliant. It drops off, but there are several other sections of town.
Yep. We, um, have been notified by D, this separate issue, but partially address that. You, T, sent us a notice of, about a funding program, cost share program to address ADA compliant issues on sidewalks. We are, we're not looking at the ones that are on DOT roads. We're looking at the ones that are on town roads and sort of, and those from our ADA plan. Uh, and, and we work with DOT on, on some cooperative funding to, to address those.
Is a typical remedy to that, a handrail like this would be on the slope, or depends on what the topography is?
It depends on the topography, um, the distance of, of the slope. For, for most ADA slopes, like you said, it's twelve to one for a, a certain distance, and then, and then it levels out. And then another slope, and then it levels out. I, I'd have to take a look at that specific.
Turns it would have been to zigzag it back, and that would have probably added more expensive concrete.
And taking, and, and leasing or. Quite easements on additional property.
Yeah, on the, the existing property would.
Yeah. So. And I'll have to take a look at the, at the intersection at Lee to see what's, to understand what it is you're referring to.
It's like a drop-down, and it's, what is concrete and the asphalt? Need, it looks like it's not.
Okay.
It doesn't look like it's ADA compliant, but.
So I requesting that the, you adopted the, uh, budget amendment number four, fifteen thousand four hundred and nineteen cents. We'll be using Pell bill revenue for that, so it's money that's already there, that, you know, for Pell bill. Um, that, um, that project finished up?
Big project.
It is.
Yeah, based on, I don't think we have a lot of choices, do we? We don't do it, we're not compliant.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's, it's in one of those, we don't really have a choice, you're right. One aspect, the work has already been done.
Yeah, right.
Or done.
One change order, the work was already done. Um, and the other one we need to have, need to do to stay compliant, and to finish, finish the, finish that end of the project.
I'll make a motion, we accept a change in the amendment.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, moving on to reports, we'll start with town manager.
Uh, just a, a couple of quick items, um, be a closure tomorrow and possibly on Thursday at East Haggard, a lane closure at East Haggard and Oak for some utility work. There'll be one lane, one lane open, but there will be some construction. And then plans come up suddenly, and it happens to be when the students are gone, so.
A good deal.
Yes. And I want to report, we, we, we got a, a voicemail in the last week from a resident over on Aspen, uh, who wanted to pass on his, um, grateful comments for the work that our, our public works guys did in cleaning up debris and, uh, brush down on, on his yard specifically. Uh, so he used terms like dedication of the residents, hard work, conscientious, outstanding work. Um, extended his thanks to the full crew, um, and other town employees for the services that we provide to our residents. He's very appreciative, said, you know, treat them right, give them a fight, give them a bonus, give them a day off. But he wanted to make sure that the kudos for the, for that crew was, was announced, and they are certainly aware of it. And, uh, I want to pass that on to you. And lastly, on Thursday, I'll be heading over to Statesville to attend the North Carolina, uh, North Carolina Main Street Conference, Main Street Champion Award Ceremony. Jill's down there this week, um, some members of our downtown committee are down there as well. And, uh, Elon's new downtown champion is gonna be Bill, it will be Bill Baucham. I don't know if any, I know some of you have met Bill. Bill, uh, started volunteering a little bit with, when Kathleen was here, um, helping out with some of the music issues. You know, just floating ideas off of him. When Kathleen left, Bill said, I'll take care of music, which was a huge help, because that was obviously, you know, late winter, as we're getting ready for spring. He got the whole spring booked. He worked with, with Kathy on the contracts and the agreements and the pay. Made life very easy for me, uh, and has continued to do that through last fall and this year. This coming year, uh, working very closely with Jill to line up the, all the music events. For those who don't know, Bill's a musician as well. He has his own local band, various iterations of his band. And, uh, is a lifelong professional in the music industry and has all sorts. And, uh, is a lifelong professional in the music industry and has all sorts of connections and, and, and know-how about, you know, finding different types of music, different acts, so it's not just the same old, same old, uh, every week. I think you'll see some real variety down there this, this, uh, the spring, so. Say kudos to Bill, and so I'll be, actually, I'm gonna be driving Bill down for the award, and, um, we'll, we'll have a, we'll be back later that day, so. That's all I've got.
Thank you. We'll start down here with Stephanie.
Um, just, I mean, all of our departments are wonderful, but I, having lived in Ashley Woods, know how hard our public works department works to clean up the mess that all our trees cause. Um, so yes, they definitely deserve tons of kudos. They're an amazing team. That's all. Thank you.
Um, our arts committee is supposed, was supposed to meet this Wednesday, um, but it's moved to, to next Wednesday. Um, because of Elon's spring break and Jill being at the Main Street Society. If you know anybody that wants to adopt a, uh, fire hydrant, make sure they fill out an application, you know, we've got a couple in, but we can use some more. We got a lot of good buzz with people wanting to do it, but now we just need that follow-through. Um, so any organizations, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, that you know, have them, have them fill it out and do it. I mean, I was unable to attend the quilt show. Man, I feel, I feel terrible about it, but, uh, I followed it pretty good and looked like it was a, a good success. And then, uh, this Saturday, we're having our, uh, Arbor Day, uh, investment from, uh, eleven to one, so I look forward to going with the plan, going with that. It looks like a fun day. Hopefully the weather is. And then also, I want to echo my kudos to, uh, the public works department. We had a storm drain issue, uh, right off my road, and they came and knocked that out and cleaned it up real good and, uh, soon as they cleaned it, they, I could just downpour it. So it was all, all of our yards flooded.
I'd just say a little bit about the quilt show. The quilt show, um, was held, um, at, uh, at church, and it was six hundred and forty-two people signed up in attendance, so we had a lot of different people come through, so that was very good. I'm very pleased, and we actually had a little bit better weather this year too, so I don't know if that helped or not, but it was definitely increased, and they raised a lot, a lot of food, uh, so just giving salvation army. Close to two tons of food, so it's very, very, very well done. The, uh, the other thing is, is that the green space, the grass is definitely growing. And, uh, so hopefully by Easter, by early April, I think we might be able to open that up, so, uh, I'm really hopeful. Pretty, and, and then thank you to, uh, to Dory for doing that. Um, and, uh, I got a chance to meet the, uh, the new employee here, Sarah Bass. I hope you've all got a chance to meet her. We'll get that soon, but she is, one of her main responsibilities will be, uh, running the farmer's market. And so we're working on all those aspects. I know that there's, I think we're up to over eleven or twelve vendors.
We're fifteen now.
Oh, see, it's grown. Yeah, we get to the last minute here, so that's why I was concerned about the roadside.
I mean, you have last year.
Uh, well, they claimed there was over twenty, but I never saw twenty ever.
Teen show up is gonna.
Oh, yeah, that'll be really good. I, I, usually when we've had the market healthy, it was around ten, eleven, so we have fifteen, that'll be really good. And not all of them, not, you know, some of the vendors don't always come each week, but, uh, but it, it will work out. But, uh, but anyway, Sarah is, uh, is doing a good job already, and, and so I just wanted to let you all know that. And, uh, and I think that's pretty much it for right now, so thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Monty?
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to go to the quilt, uh, show the first time I've had it on, and I was really amazed the number of volunteers that show up. And I think it's always a good testament, and we see people, you know, passionate for something, and, uh, artwork is just, it's unbelievable. You know, the amount of hours spent on something, um, so I, I appreciate that from a town perspective, being able to host a lot of people here. And, uh, we had our LMO meeting last time, right after our last meeting, so we're progressing slowly, but, uh, hopefully we'll be able to have something to, uh, put our hands around it. Congratulations, University of Elon, um, for baseball game today. They beat NC State fourteen to six. It was painful, but I watched.
That's called mixed emotions, right?
So congratulations, you know.
Yeah, uh, very pleased with our financial report. Kathy, Ridge, thank y'all, everybody for, for what you do there. That's, um, can't take that for granted, and there's a lot of work.
Truly a team effort.
But, uh, very pleased with that, and, uh, Bill was very deserving of the Main Street. Because he, he has done a lot volunteering his time and helped out, like you said, uh, you know, in the interim between, we had a lot of interims there, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's a very good honor for him.
And, and he just brings like character to our town. He's there every Friday. There's no stranger. He's saying hey and welcoming everybody, and that's like, that's what you want in your resident, and somebody who just loves the town, and that's, it's really cool.
Yeah, it is. That's all from him.
Awesome. I feel like I had like several things I was gonna say. Um, I wanted to comment on how great downtown has looked recently. I've seen Joe down on his hands and knees digging in the dirt and cleaning up all the flower beds and, um, you know, I walk downtown almost every day. And I always see Joe, though he's, he's certainly, uh, a fixture of downtown in his role in public works. Um, I too am looking forward to the Arbor Day event this weekend and hoping for good weather. Um, also, I'm gonna be headed to Statesville on Thursday morning. Um, have to go to the office in Charlotte afterwards, or else I'd maybe try to grab a ride.
So you can sit in the backseat of my Prius seat, you know? I've already warned Bill.
I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to that because it, it's well deserved, um, for sure, and he, he's, he's done a lot, so we certainly appreciate that. I think that is all, so, um, show a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.